And discussion? All in favor of approving the amendments as written, please say aye.
Aye.
In a public, same time? Thank you. We're already gone through the public comments, or is there anybody else that has a public comment at this point? And if not, what we will do is we are going to open up a site plan review for the Michigan Softwater, West Michigan, site plan review. And do we have a representative? I would like you to, I invite you to come on up and just tell us what you want to do. Andy, give us your name, obviously.
Hi, I'm Mike Shkiewski. I represent Westside Building Company and I represent the owner on this project. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for moving up the agenda or our item, that's very gracious. My family will appreciate it when we talk about it. But yeah, it's all pretty simple. We just want to put a small addition on the existing building. And we prepared a site plan and we are in full agreement with all of the comments from Mr. Moore. And so, like I say, it's all right there in front of you. It's a pretty simple, small 30 by 80 addition to that existing building. Will be used for warehousing for the current business.
I noticed we don't have any other additions, so is the roof lines going to stay the same? They going higher?
Yeah, and actually, we'll add those, you know, once we get approval and we go to architectural design. That new roof will be probably about two feet higher than the existing, just so the gables can tie together. Other than that, there's really no reason to make it larger, but I think it'll tie the roof together better and it would be easier for, or less expensive for destruction.
Andy, do you have any specific questions?
No. Not really. The only issue or, you know, moderate concern, I guess, that we had looking at this thing was that the site plan doesn't give us a lot of detail with regard to the overall coverage for the site, so the, it shows, I think it shows the asphalt area that's going to be next to the warehouse expansion that's going to the north. Looks like it's going to basically drain off to the north, which is probably fine, but in talking with your city engineer, he was also questioning, you know, where does the stormwater go now? And we're making everyone else kind of deal with their own stormwater, whether it's tying into your system or providing stormwater provisions on site, and there's just not a lot of detail here to address that or make any sort of definitive conclusion. So, one of the conditions that I had suggested here, I did recommend approval in my report, and if you want to go through that, you can. But I did suggest that just, you know, working with our engineer and just providing whatever information he needs to be comfortable with, with the overall stormwater provisions. The only other substantive comment that I had was that I know the last couple of applications we've talked about tying the sidewalk to the front door. They didn't do that, and it's, I don't have a strong feeling either way, but in the interest of consistency, I guess I just make that observation.
Let's go back to your runoff situation, their entire front area is all blacked out, right?
Right.
So, the only way they could do a sidewalk really would be to do a line.
Primarily, yeah. And that's what some of the previous applicants said. There's a little bit of room to make a connection, but there's a little parking lot that they have to cross. Of the building, so it has just striped. And so, like I said, I don't have particularly strong feelings either way, I just point that out in the interest of consistency with previous reviews. Do we have any approvals, I hope you want to strike that, you know, and just make sure we do that.
Well, yeah, my concern would be if there is nothing there, but right now it's all, it's blacked out. And I don't know if that affects the drainage issue, I guess that's the question. And also landscaping, I'm a little unsure as to where the landscaping is. I know it's supposed to go in the bow.
Well, they provided landscaping on the site between the parking lot, they have landscaping planned, they provided, so there's maybe 15 feet or so between the parking lot and the side, and they show six trees there. I mean, they've got the right number of trees and shrubs for the ordinance, so I don't know if you have.
Okay, and those trees are not actually there at this point?
Correct. So, on this plan here, they show us, I don't know if that's the same one that you have or not. Okay, yeah, well, there was a revision, I think they made. So, there are some, and you guys can pass this around, he's got, you can see there along.
Okay, yeah, you see this one's over.
He's got it.
Okay. And these are not, they were, they're not there.
Yeah, it was by there on, what was it, your last one?
Saying this wasn't even on ours, the full site here, it's not on ours.
It was on second page.
Yeah, the building was on page two, I don't know if it's on page two. Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a landscaping plan previously.
No, we didn't get the landscaping.
Anything about additional signage on the north side or anything, see if they're all over?
Well, they wouldn't, they're only allowed to do signage on, they can have one ground sign, and then they can do one sign per side that faces a parking lot or a street. So, they would only be able to do a sign on the side that faces Bowes, or this, I suppose they could do it on the west side, because there's a couple parking spaces over there. So, I know previously, I forget who it was, they wanted to put it on the north side, and that, in this case, we wouldn't allow it because.
Ron's service?
Yeah. They ended up putting, they ended up, well, because they put parking back there.
Gotcha.
That's what the purpose is, that's the only reason why that was allowed. So, in this case, there's an existing sign on the site that's not very big, and I'm fine with it the way it is, and if they want to change it, that's fine too. They don't have any changes proposed to the sign, and if they want to, if they submitted something later for a new sign or whatever, then we would just apply the standards of the ordinance and let them do what the ordinance permitted.
Do they have additional lighting on there too on the side of the building?
I wouldn't show it on the line, I don't think, so, yeah, that was something that we, that we called out, called out, I think it mentions having wall caps, but.
Yeah.
And we usually just like a touch sheet that just shows what the picture looks like.
I think that's submitted to, is it enforcement?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so basically, anything that's dark sky, you know, fully cut off, would be, would most likely be acceptable for that.
I think if the wood fence enclosure is their trash, that's worth staying?
Yeah, that's the way I understood it.
That's correct, yes. That, that stays there on the other side of the building, that existing lean to. That, all that stuff stays too, but we're going to kind of overframe that to bring the two buildings together. So, that'll be reflected in the architectural design when that's submitted for permitting.
That's a, that's a lot of asphalt in the building to have that much more runoff.
Well, it's a lot of asphalt right in the front, so having the trees there will help break that up a little bit. I mean, right now, it's, you know.
It's all asphalt.
I mean, the whole front.
The 80 by 40 addition?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a water runoff. Says they want to run it right to the back, but.
And so, new impervious surface, you're looking at what, maybe 6,000 square feet-ish? So, which, I mean, it's less than what they, I mean, it's not, it's significant, currently have more than that, I don't know what the exact number is, but the site overall is, as you can see on the contours here, it's pretty flat. I mean, you're talking maybe a foot elevation change, the whole thing is basically, it's really flat. So, I mean, just at a glance, I don't think there's huge concerns, and there's certainly room to work with it, but, you know, we've, with everybody else, we've made them, you know, give us enough information and calculations to, for, you know, DPW or staff to decide if it was adequate, and that's really the only, you know, the item that's lacking on site plan, so. I think that can be worked out, you know, as a condition, and we can work with them on, I'm getting that taken care of.
Okay, let's go through, thanks Andy. Let's go through the site plan review. Thanks, thanks. If you want to just stay there, just as we go through these, it might, there might be a question.
Okay.
Might be easier for you, then you won't have to keep talking about it.
Okay.
Let's do the site plan review standards. A, the uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare uses of structures located on the site shall be planned to take into account the size of the property, uses on adjoining property, and the relationship and size of buildings to the site. The site shall be developed so as not to impede normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in this ordinance. All in favor of saying that the standard is met? Please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that, that standard there is the one that you're referring to with the water runoff by what I assume, right? As much as any?
Yeah, primarily.
Let's keep that in mind when we get to conditions then.
Okay.
B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress, egress points, and within the site. Drive streets and other circulation routes shall be designed for the most safe and efficient traffic operations within the site. And have egress, ingress, and egress points. The applicant is not proposing any changes, no changes are suggested, may find that the standard is met. The only, I take that back. All in favor of saying that the standard is met, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the system. And here the remarks are, is not proposed any changes. Additionally, an existing sidewalk crosses the front edge of the property within the roadway, the planning commission may require a sidewalk connection to the front door as it has done in previous applications, otherwise it may find that the standard is met. And again, when we do the conditions, I would like to include that we do striping or something on the asphalt to indicate a sidewalk corner. A safer standard, because right now it's just a pretty standing blacktop.
The front where the handicap parking is going to be, is that high creep ramp, handicap ramp?
That's just existing right there, would be the asphalt pavement.
And that must be in grade with the sidewalk then?
Right, yeah, I believe it's just, it just slopes right up to the front entry. But, and I don't recall if that's, if that's striped like that, but if, you know, if that's what you want, to find the sidewalk or the walkway so it is a clear path to the front door, we can certainly strike that.
Yeah, and I think also the, that's good point, handicap parking probably should be right there as well. Yeah, and again, striking and all of that. Yeah, yeah. And as long as that's all tied in together there, I think it kind of makes some sense. Again, that would go into the conditions. Okay.
Maybe add a handicap sign if there is not.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. Basically, clear it up and make it safer for pedestrians, I mean, from the sidewalk in, that sort of thing, just.
Right.
A note there that, hey, look, somebody could be walking here.
Okay.
Because we're obviously trying to encourage people to walk and do stuff that way, it's like, they're taking flight, so, thank you. D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with the requirements of this ordinance. The planning commission requires that approved landscaping buffers, green belts be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one end or end from surrounding public and private property. The remarks are, the subject property is void of any significant natural features and is not within a 100-year floodplain. The applicant will be provided more significant vegetation that currently exists on the site. Continuous maintenance of landscape areas can be required as condition of approval. Anything you can do to add green space on that property would be totally a goal. All in favor of approving the, that standard as written, please say aye.
Aye. Other than we didn't approve C, the changes that we talked about, whether it's the handicap sidewalk, please.
Okay, yes, we'll put that in, into the conditions, the changes. So, all in favor of C then, I'm sorry.
That's all right, yes.
Okay. And D, we've approved, so. E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided, shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinance codes and requirements of the city of law will be met. And we'll address that as part of the condition of approval. All in favor of accepting that standard as written?
Yes.
Yes.
And opposed, same sign. F, the general purpose and spirit of this ordinance and comprehensive plan of the city of law shall be maintained. The remarks are, the master plan indicates that the subject property is located within the mixed-use future land use designation. According to the master plan, the mixed-use land category is intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial land uses, but not necessarily in a downtown-style building. The proposal is for an addition to an existing business office and accessory warehouse, which is permanently right in the C3 general commercial district, and consistent with the character of the area and similar to the previous use of the property. The planning commission may find that the standard is met. All in favor of agreeing that the standard is met, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Standard is met. So, having said that, I would ask that a motion be made to okay the site plan along with the following conditions.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
Andy, you can answer this. For the addition of this building in any future, what else could they possibly look at expanding? I know this would be, it's so many feet over the course of the lot size, so, so that they understand going forward, if they were to throw another third addition on, do they have the room and expandability for that for any future, not what's here today?
In terms of setbacks, yeah, where they would run into issues with a lot coverage standards in the year, right? So, it says that, you know, I think it maxes like 60%, and they're not there yet. So, there is a little bit of area there for future growth, I suppose, but I don't think it would accommodate, you know, another one of these.
These sides?
Size, size changes, but, yeah, there's, there is some room, but again, and also when you get, I mean, the building might start getting a little cumbersome, it's just dimensionally with the weight of the layout being really long, it's getting like that, it's a very narrow parcel in general. So, there is some room for expansion, how much, I don't know, but it probably wouldn't be as much as what we're doing now.
Thank you.
Again, the, ask for a motion to okay the site plan?
I'll make a motion that we accept the site plan as.
As written.
As written with the conditions.
And the conditions that we're showing, and Andy, back me up as I read through these if I'm missing one. Number one, no demolition or earthwork shall be undertaken on the site until the building permit has been issued consistent with the site plan approval. Number two, prior to issuance of any city permits, the applicant shall have paid all application permit, reimbursement escrow, and other fees related to the request. Number three, the applicant shall maintain all required state, federal, and local permits and approvals. Number four, the applicant shall submit additional information detailing site drainage for both existing and proposed impervious surfaces to ensure that stormwater is not flowing onto adjacent property. And that's the way we want it, right?
I think so. I wrote it so.
Number five, the applicant shall comply with the stipulations of the city fire department and any other applicable emergency personnel regarding emergency access to the site. Number six, the applicant shall submit details related to the type of light fixture for review by the city zoning enforcement officer. Number seven, the applicant shall provide a sidewalk connection, signage, that sort of thing, to the main entrance of the building. And I guess, as always, is there any other conditions that you guys can think of that we have requested? Yeah, that would be the sidewalk.
Just here, the other one that you could add that we briefly talked about was maintenance of the newly installed landscape areas. That's in the ordinance now anyways, so I don't know that we need it specifically as a condition of approval, but is, you know, if you're inclined, you could add that as a number eight or nine.
Do we need any further plans on the, on the trees and things of that nature? Is that sufficient with what you have?
I think this is, what we have here is sufficient. You know, when they submit architectural plans and stuff, obviously, evil's still leaving a show on there, and, you know, it's possible that moving forward as they start to lay out the site, they might want to move a tree a little bit here or there, and in that case, they can work with us to.
Sure.
Make sure that what they're doing is still within what's permitted.
Let's leave off number eight then, we've got it in our zoning ordinance, you should certainly be aware of that. If he has trees planted there, I hope he waters them anyway, and I know he will, so. All in favor?
With that, I'll support it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as, as given, as well as the conditions? Please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Good luck.
And welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice to have you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming today. Now, full business, there is a, I would like to open up a public hearing on the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act, Public Act PA 100, 2006, which specifically, we are looking at chapters four and 17, updating our zoning ordinances. And again, what we have done with our zoning ordinances and the intent of this is to try not to tackle the entire zoning ordinance as one chunk. Instead, we are trying to break it up, and the way we decided this was chapters four, which are general provisions, and chapter 17, which is land use. We felt that those two chapters were the ones that were the, probably the most necessary to do. According to the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act of 2006, or 86, we do need to go through our zoning ordinances and update them, and one of the, one of the things that we are trying desperately to do is to make this more user-friendly to the citizens and to the planners and to the developers of the city of old. So, what we, what we're attempting to do is to upgrade this zoning ordinance several chapters at a time, and also to upgrade it so that it meets state standards and rules and laws. And also make it easier to understand for the, again, for the citizens and developers and even our, even our own employees frankly, and for the planning commission staff, as much as any. So, having said that, that's, that's the idea behind this. Our intent is to do two to three chapters every so often, pass those on to the city council, with a recommendation to accept them as part of the zoning ordinance. City council then has a right to accept them, to alter them, to change them, and accept them, to send them back to us, or to flat-out decline them. So, they get the final say on that, in which case, there'll be another public chance to address these zoning issues if there are any. All of our meetings have been open to the public, certainly, we've scheduled them, they've been announced, so there's, should not be any surprises here. Having said that, I'll open it up for discussion. Let's start off with the planning commissioners. Do you have any thoughts on this planning commission? As to what, what the procedure is and what we've done so far?
Yeah, I think we spent a lot of time, Andy, throwing your help, I mean, it was thorough, and I think we've done a good job to be able to pass the sign we went on to city council for future approval.
Andy, any thoughts?
No, I think, you know, Jim said it well, you've been working at this for a long time. One thing I did do when I was preparing for this meeting, looking through everything, is we did, we spent, I think, most of our time probably talking about landscaping stuff, and one of the things you mentioned was usability and readability, and so right now, there are standards for landscaping that's scattered everywhere throughout the ordinance. They're in three or four district chapters, through the parking chapter, and they're in general provisions, so now we're going to move it all, put it into one place. So, one of the things that, that we will need to do, and this can be a, I guess, condition of approval, if you're inclined to approve it tonight, is I, Satrie and I added something I didn't give it to you yet, but we need to add language to this ordinance that removes the landscaping standards from everywhere else, in addition to putting the new stuff where it currently is.
Which is in chapter four?
It is in chapters, so right now, it's, it's going to be in chapter four.
Right.
Right now, it's in, so we're basically moving the standards from section 10.04, 12.04, 12.8.04, 13.04, 19.06, and putting them all in, in one place. So, we've done that, but now we need to actually eliminate what's in that place. So, I have the ordinance drafted, I'll give it to the city attorney before we go as a council, so that he's comfortable with it. But that's, that's the only, I guess, suggestion I would have at this point, everything else is fine, we've been through it numerous times at this point in that thing.
Which, to the general public, I hope this makes absolutely logical sense, that that's exactly what we're trying to do here, is to make this a little bit easier for everybody to handle. So, thanks, Andy. Commissioners, do we want to accept that as, as a condition for agreeing to pass these on to the council?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve chapter four general provisions, and I'll be with chapter 17 provisions, with the noted changes that will be made by Andy.
Okay.
For it on the city council.
And support?
I'll support.
Okay. And all, any discussion, any further discussion? I'm going to close the public portion of this then, and then we, all in favor of accepting the motion as stated? Please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. So, the motion is accepted unanimously, and Sue, can you put us on the calendar? I assume we have to actually physically come to the city council meeting or something and make that proposal to the city?
Okay, yep, I can send out, we'll probably have it on the next council meeting.
Which would be next Monday?
The first.
A week from today? Or the first of September?
That should be the.
21st.
The 21st is our next council meeting.
Right. Can you put me, put us on there?
Is that going to work for you, Andy?
Yeah, we have everything listed. Yeah, I mean, everything.
Next Monday.
Yeah, I can, I can send the amendment over right away, with the added language. As far as council goes, the only thing I would, and I guess it's up to you guys, but the only thing that I would suggest is that because we're given on 50 some odd pages worth of amendments, I don't know if they're going to get through all of it in just six days, so.
But they don't need to accept it on that same day, do they?
No, they don't.
So, we could present it, and it's up to them to take their time as to when they want to schedule it.
Yeah, in the past, I don't know that. Yeah, in the past, I don't know that, I mean, I haven't gone to council meetings and presented this stuff in the past, although I can. So yeah, whether, I guess whenever they want to do it is fine, if they want to approve it in one night, or if they want to wait, I guess that's up, that's up to them, up to staff, so.
Sue, I'll leave it up to you. I mean, I don't, I don't mind coming, I mean, that's, that's fine, and presenting it. I mean, all we're doing is we're passing it on in its entirety to the city council. I mean, that's, that's up to them. At that point, they, they make their decisions what they want to do. And where you're down is as to what we want to present to them, so.
I don't think we've ever done an official handoff that I can recall.
Yeah.
I don't think we have either.
I'm trying to figure out my processes.
Right.
Yeah, I just-
Typically, what, what happens is-
Jim, do you have any comments from past meetings, sir?
Because then you showed up.
I'll speak to the microphone, so I get on the record, Jim Hodges, 422 North Jefferson Street, but all knowing that. Yeah, usually in the past, it's just been presented as, as a recommendation. A lot of our stuff is online now, and although I don't do that so much, but, and I think the council would skim that over, believe me. My philosophy, and other council, city council members may, may differ a bit, but my philosophy is you guys have done, done the work, all of our boards and commissions do a lot of work. If you guys recommend it, and unanimously, chances are, I'm not going to look at turning it down. It's pretty much that, that simple. You guys have done a lot of work, and it's not like it was done in one, one meeting. I used it in fifteen, twenty minute segments to help me to sleep each night. And I thank you for that. But I think that a presentation and having it available for the council to review would be fine, but to actually publish it in fifty pages times five city council members and other documents, no. You'll be good.
Well, I, I still would, put me on the agenda. I don't care if it's next Monday or, you know, in September, frankly.
Just guessing, and, and this may be the city manager and the mayor also, as they will build the agenda, but the next council meeting might be a little busy, and you might want to put it off to our, for our first meeting in September, which is the day after Labor Day.
Yeah, and I'm going to be out of town, I know that, so that's, that's not good for me, but it doesn't need me there anyway, so Jim can go and present it just as easily, so. It's a unanimous decision, and I think our, our presence at the city council meeting should, should be, we should be-
I will definitely represent us there.
Okay. Either way you want to do it, Sue. If you want to do it next Monday or the following one, it's up to you guys. I, you know, whatever's more convenient, I guess.
Okay.
And we will continue the process of going several chapters at a time. I think we've given you a list of kind of where we're heading next.
I think we did. Yeah, I mean, the last time- It's been a while. But the last time that we talked about this, most of the stuff we talked about was chapter seventeen, so from there, I don't know if we talked about the next chapter that you guys want to tackle. I mean, I can provide you some suggestions, I guess.
Why don't you do that? And there are some chapters that are relatively clean, that we won't have to do much. And maybe you can put together a couple of different lists there. One, one working list, and one a list that we can say, okay, is there any changes to that, that sort of thing? And then we can pass that on to city council again somewhere. I'd like to keep that process rolling so that they're, they're used to that process.
Sure.
I think it will help them too. If we can make it easier for them, that's, that would be the option. So, thank you.
Andy, I have some notes I can pass on to you-
Okay.
For the next chapters.
Seems like we talked about-
There's a list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three, four different ones, yeah. You'll find it. Right, okay. Um, which agenda? We've done our public hearing, site plan review we've done, so master plan, we'll back to the master plan, guys. And, and before I go too far here, I want to say thank you to the planning commission and to Andy for staying diligent on the, on zoning ordinance. It's a, it's a constant process, but if we stay tuned in to it, we'll, we'll eventually get through it on relatively good, good terms. So I, I do want to say thank you very much, so to everybody. Okay, back to the master plan, and on this one, we are now on chapter three, I believe, which is the goals and objectives. And Andy, you want to kind of walk us through that again?
Sure, so what the, the goals and objectives are, it's, that's really where you get into eating potatoes, planning, you know, kind of long-range planning and policymaking in a master plan. So most master plans have a, a section like this, or, or, or very similar to it, where sometimes there's, there's a vision statement, which you guys have currently, sometimes there's not. And usually, there's a list of goals, which are typically fairly broad, kind of long-term goals, and then underneath each goal, as you have in, in your plan here, the bullets underneath it are sort of steps or milestones that you would accomplish on the way to achieving the overall goal. So in a way, it kind of functions as a, here's what our policy is, and here's how we aim to do it. And so your master plan has, I won't forget how many, one, two, three, four, five, about ten or twelve goals and policies across a variety of topics. So this isn't something that's just confined to housing, or just confined to infrastructure. They're kind of broken up by category. So the first couple talk about growth and development. There are a couple on the next page that talk about community image, land use, transportation, housing. So it's really an all-encompassing, broad sort of policy foundation and series of policy statements that really drive the land use plan and where you want to go, and really set the table for how the community is going to develop over the horizon of the plan, which is typically at least twenty to thirty years, sometimes forty or fifty. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to go through each of these individually, or if you just want to open it up and have general questions about whether or not they, they still apply. You know, I don't have a lot of, a lot of strong opinions here as far as what should stay and what should go. I didn't find anything that was inappropriate, or anything that I felt like didn't belong here. Generally, they're thoughtful, they're well-written, they make sense. But I think the planning commission, as part of this conversation, should sort of discuss if there's anything that's, that's overlooked, or that's not sufficiently addressed, or something like that.
I don't have, pardon me, but none of us were around twenty, thirty years ago on any of the boards, so did we accomplish any of these goals that they set twenty, thirty years ago, and were they put forward, or did we do anything, and, you know?
Well, these come ten years ago, from two thousand and seven. So these are-
Yeah, but none of us were on this board ten years ago. So I'm not okay if it's ten years ago, did we achieve any of those objectives?
Yeah, right, well, I think we'll get to that. I mean, some of the, some of it isn't, it's not always as simple as just a, a yes or no, achieved or, or not achieved. For example, you know, it says, "We'll maintain a transportation network that is sensitive to the land uses it serves, protects the integrity of residential neighborhood, and promotes safety within all areas of the city." From a transportation standpoint, generally, that's probably accomplished, but it's a maintenance issue. I mean, the streets have been there for a long time. So it's not as if this contemplated building an entirely brand-new network of roads, which has been, which has been done, it's, it's looking at, at a street network that exists and saying, let's, let's maintain this, and let's continue to provide safe access to property and businesses and so forth. And so I guess you could say that that's been accomplished, but I, you know, I guess the question for, for, for you guys is whether it's been, you know, accomplished to your satisfaction, and, you know, have there been missed opportunities? Have there been more that, you know, the city in general could have done? You know, I'm not, I don't know, but-
I, I, under that transportation goals and policies, I'd like to bring up a couple additional ideas, I guess, and one is river transportation. Being a river, a river city here, with two rivers actually, is there an opportunity there to, to look at the river as a highway? Which it is. Or it used to be, many years ago, too. So the question, I, my, my question is, is that something that we can envision twenty years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now? And secondarily, the use of buses or railer transportation in the Grand Rapids, as an Bike trails, I, you know, all of those kinds of issues.
Well, I know Grand Rapids, yeah, I know Grand Rapids, we're looking at a high-speed possible system in their near future of connecting cities and that part without roads and streets, and taking that type of transportation down too. And I think Rich, Rich over at DPW is working on maybe how to interconnect more sidewalks and city streets to be safer in that part of, I know, I've heard him mention that several times, and I think he's working on a, on a plan for that, to move that forward, so.
Right.
You know, I think, I think we're aware of it, but-
I, I know, like, the, the river transportation, I'm talking, there are other cities in Michigan even, that are, they have river trails, that's what they're called, they're trails. And they get, they get funds from Department of Transportation to help facilitate the use of signage and all kinds of different things. And certainly, we've got, you know, two major rivers here that, that might possibly lead to more people, you know, kayaking or whatever. And same with bike trails, and, and same with buses. I mean, buses go out to Allenville, why can't they come out here? You know, is there a need? Maybe there's no need, I mean, that, that's entirely possible, too. But, the point is, is that have we even thought about, I guess? And I'm not, I'm not saying that we necessarily would rewrite the entire master plan just to incorporate those two, I'm just throwing those ideas out as something that, you know, I think we should kind of just kind of think about a little bit. And then, the, the one right underneath it, to promote an appropriate image, I have absolutely no clue, "A city will work with community groups and downtown interests to initiate coordinated efforts to provide a clear sense of entry into the community on M-21 and all the Nash Lincoln Lake." I think, I, coming in from M-21, coming from Grand Rapids, I remember, you know, a nice sign there and all of that. The other two locations I don't, I just don't, is there one?
Yeah, there's one coming in from the Nash.
Okay, okay.
And I don't think we have one coming in from the Expressway, do we?
No, we have them at all points of entry, but we have like, just the regular little city limits.
Right, yeah.
Quite frankly, the, the signs we have now, in my opinion, are pretty tired. They need to be done.
Yeah.
Something that, you know, if I have the money in a couple of years, I'd like to do that, but it's-
Okay, and same with the entry ways to the city will emphasize the heritage of the rivers and importance to the image of the city whole. I mean, we're just, I, to me, we're, the, the city just is not making very much use or advantage of the rivers that we have here. I, I just think that there's got to be something that we could do, and I don't know what that is, I have no clue.
Well, to me, too, the image is, is how our homes look, how our streets look, and our grass is mowed, and we have all kinds of ordinances in place that, that protect us from, I know whether we enforce them or not, that's something a little bit different, so.
Yeah. I, I think the city has, I mean, the boardwalk can only go so far here.
Right.
And it's in private property. We've now got the, the new docks are there, the, you know-
They've had it, so, yeah, yeah.
So I would say, yes, the city, the city values that river or the grand.
Yeah.
I mean, eventually, when the fair goes away, we've got a huge track of land down there.
Well, that's another one, does that long in here somewhere in the master plan? But how do we want to look at that? Do we want to look at it? City council want to look at it? How do we want to approach that? I have no clue. I mean, that's, that's, I, I think that's just something that we need to consider.
I think that's something we give back to the citizens and look for insight and ideas and different things, as a community versus a select few deciding, this is what I'd like to see.
And maybe that's part of the survey that Andy was talking about, frankly. And that is, that's, seems to me as though that's-
Because I'm going to assume, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, knowing that they're going to go away, there has been startup talk about what to do with all that, correct?
Absolutely. The Parks and Recreation Commission has been looking into a dream plan, they've been working on that actually for about three years. We knew about it long before people knew about it. And also, through LARA, Whole Area Recreation Authority, they've been looking at various bike trails, as well as water trails. In a previous strategic plan that a previous city manager had, had put in place, there was a desire to have a crosswalk, which we finally got painted just, just a year or so ago, but we were looking at having that, and yet, to be a kayak portage. So that doesn't mean that we need to have a takeout someplace down here to create something like that. It's a little closer to the Bridge and Dam here, but we're looking, there is some, some stuff in Smol here, or somewhere back in the files, or all of those, those types of things, so, yes, those things have been looked at. And to speak to some of the other transportation issues, Lowell does participate in the Hope Network for busing and for helping people get call, ride, ride to call, or something like that, and dial or, yeah, dial or ride, yeah. So those things kind of are, are in place. Maybe I can answer some of your other questions or, or concerns about what, what maybe your master plan is, as far as goals and objectives for, for the future. But there has been a strategic plan that was put into effect a, a while ago, and it's lost its traction, but there are some things that we could revisit.
Maybe you, you, once you find it, you could share it with us, and, and Andy, so that we can take, kind of take a look at it and-
Oh, through the administration, some new methods have been put into, put in place with, with the new council, and so, yeah, those, those listings are available. But keep in mind, you've got other groups too, such as the Parks and Recreation Commission, and this BBA, Historic Commission, all kinds of other great groups, such as yourselves, that help make the city work, and it's over sixty-four people in the city work as volunteers.
Right. Thanks, Jim. Well, and that, that really is the question, is, you know, I mean, we don't want to, certainly don't want to reduce it, but if it's already been done, or make, make life easier. And if we can shed some light on it, on the other hand, that would make some sense. So, another one was on page thirty-five, and it was the last sentence there, it says, "The city will work with county agencies to, to provide regional branch offices to improve access to county services. Information about existing regional offices will be distributed to city residents." I know, I haven't, I've been here about two and a half years now roughly, and I, I do not recall ever seeing anything along that line. I'm, I'm just curious, that seems to make some sense. I mean, I, you know, the county, what, what the county provides and things of that nature. I, I don't know that we, you know, do we still do that or not? I, I really don't know. I mean, I have no clue.
First I've heard of it. I mean, pretty much everything's pretty set-